Okay, welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for February 13th, 2017. We're going to go quickly to executive session. So, in accordance with the state's sun... Oh, first, let's have a roll call. Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Mr. Hilo?
Here.
And Mrs. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 9th, 2017 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that the public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the contract resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is an addendum to the collective negotiations agreement regarding modification to the calendar. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So, can I have a motion for closed session?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to go to executive session. We'd be... plan to be back at 7:30.
All right, thank you, everyone. We're back from executive session. Mr. Mahmood, may I have a roll call, please? Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Mr. Hilo?
Here.
And Mrs. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we had some correspondence, as listed on your agenda, board members. I'd like to turn the program over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We have a very exciting evening planned for everybody. We see a lot of parents and students here this evening. Kaz, maybe you can pan in the back so that we can see. Big smiles for the camera and my little students. Here we go. Tonight, we're going to have two spotlights on students. Every month, we try to spend some time showcasing some of the great things that are going on throughout the district. And tonight, we have students from Hillsborough Elementary School, our fourth graders. But first, we're going to bring up our first graders from Woodfern Elementary School that are going to share the work that they're doing as architects with LEGO. So, with that, it's my pleasure to introduce the principal of Woodfern Elementary School, Mr. Stephen Carrigan. Please welcome.
Thank you very much. I don't want to say much because I don't want to give anything away. I do want to say that last month, Dr. Jabolski was here for the middle school spotlight on students and had some robotics, the robotics team and club. We want to kind of show you the beginnings of that. So, without any further ado, Mrs. Heather Bartholomew, our art teacher.
Good evening. I am Heather Bartholomew, the art teacher at Woodfern. I'm here with my colleague Shirley Mestowski, our computer support teacher, and a few of our first graders. And we're going to share with you some things we've been doing about architecture in art class. So, along with our main concepts, which is figuring out what architecture is, discovering different types of architecture, looking at digital architecture, understanding the parts of architecture, the blueprint, the construction, the design. We also wanted to come up with a way to have students solve a problem multiple ways. Have them think about coming up with creatively different ways to solve one problem. So, we turned this project really into three different steps. The first of which used the computer, which the students loved. And I'm going to pass this off to my colleague now to talk to you about that first step.
Hi. So, the students used Build With Chrome, which is an online tool that incorporates current technology with elements of building with Legos. So, actual virtual Lego pieces, different colors of the Lego pieces, different types of blocks, doors, windows, if you will. It also incorporates Google Maps, which is pretty cool because it adds a shade of globalization to it. Structures can be pinpointed to a specific location all across the world. So, in addition to actually building, you can then view structures that were created by students and people all over the globe. Our master builders at Woodfern used Build With Chrome, and they built a structure that they created in their mind. That was their task in studying architecture. They were to come up with some type of building structure. They could then change the color of the Lego pieces that they wanted. They could utilize specific pieces to make, like I said, doors and windows. Through this process, the students expanded upon their imagination. They further developed their sense of spatial concepts. And they also incorporated technology as a tool for actual building and architecture design, which was pretty cool.
Okay, so I'll turn it back over to... So, as you can see in some of the slides, from there, the students took a printout of their computer-generated building and had to create a rendering from it. So, now, instead of working three-dimensional, they were working two-dimensional. They had to pick one side of their building to then create an artwork of. So, most students chose the front. That's the one that they put the most time into in the computer aspect of the project. They had to create a drawing. They had to add details. Now, they were adding a roof. They were also thinking about what sort of details would be around the building. So, if it was a house, would there be landscaping? Would there be sidewalks or a porch? If it was something like a store, would there be a parking lot or cars outside? They traced over their lines with oil pastel and then did a type of wax resist using watercolor on top of that. They love to paint in art class. They love to get messy. So, this is also a highlight of the project. From this point on, once their paintings were finished, we moved on to building with actual Legos. So, students got a pile of Legos on their table. They were given the printout of their building back. And they're now trying to recreate the building they originally created in the beginning using actual Legos. So, they're problem-solving piece size. There weren't enough doors for everybody. So, they had to figure out how to create a door if they didn't have a door. If they had part of a building taller than the other, they had to figure out what pieces to use to be able to do that. So, that was the last step of the project or component to the project. There's a few pictures on the board. And I'm going to pass this off to some of our friends back here to share with you some of the things they did on their particular projects.
Hello, my name is Eleanor. The building I chose to make for this project was a house. I really like using the mouse on the computer to make the building. Then, while looking at my computer printouts, I made a drawing of the house in my drawing. I also added a roof to go on top of the house. The last step was to make my house out of Legos. It was hard to build it without a base, but still really fun.
Hello, my name is Jacob. The first thing I had to do was make a decision about what type of building I wanted to make. I chose to make a movie theater. I enjoyed building my movie theater on the computer because I got to pick what color blocks I was using. I really liked creating the painting of my movie theater because it was messy. When I built the movie theater out of Legos, it was fun to try to figure out how to build a door when I didn't have one to use.
Hello, my name is Susan. I enjoyed making my house on the computer because I like to design new things. I really liked the rendering part of the project because I like it when I do art and I get messy. I also had fun adding details to my house to make it look more real. When I built the house with Legos, I liked having to find different pieces that would fit together to make a good sculpture of my house.
Hello, my name is Brody. In the beginning of the project, I decided to make the Empire State Building. When I was making the building on the computer, it was really cool that I could move the screen around to see all of the sides of the building. And it helped me... Wait. It helped me make the details. I liked using the oil pastels on the painting because they are really bright. Building the Empire State Building with Legos was fun because I got to add more details.
All right. So, we just want to thank our four first-grade students here. I think they did a great job explaining their artwork. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. I just have to say this. There's about 70 or 80 people in this room, and those were six- and seven-year-olds. How articulate are they? Wonderful, wonderful job. Young engineers, one and all.
All right. Thank you so much. Really, job very, very well done. Next up, and I ask that our first graders and their parents just hang out with us just for a couple more minutes. And we're going to take a break after our fourth-grade friends come up and share some really interesting things that they're doing with a neighboring district. So, here at the podium is our principal of Hillsborough Elementary School, Ms. Susan Eckstein.
Thank you. One of the many privileges of being an elementary school principal is watching the seeds we plant early on, such as Mr. Carrigan's young ones. They take hold, grow roots, and begin to sprout. While academics are always in the forefront, the foundation is citizenship and character. Making connections with the generations that have gone before builds respect, empathy, and a strong sense of community and belonging. The fourth graders who stand before you engaged in a unique activity that joined neighboring districts and spanned across generations. Through friendly competition, they had the opportunity to reach beyond themselves and see the bigger picture. This is the future. Tonight, they will share their experience and their reflections on the event. I'd like to thank a few people before I turn the microphone over, and that includes the Montgomery Senior Center, who invited us to this grand event. Thank you to Mrs. Moore, Mrs. Cropley, the teachers, for providing their class with such an outstanding opportunity. Thank you for Mrs. Dano for serving as our photographer. And last, but certainly not least, to Mrs. Z for compiling the video and the technical portion of the presentation. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Cropley.
I'm actually just going to turn this over to my fourth graders because they're... they have eagerly been awaiting this presentation, so...
Hi, my name is Sakai Summers, and I'm in Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Cropley's fourth-grade class at Hillsborough Elementary School. On October 21st, my class was fortunate enough to go to the Montgomery Senior Center to participate in a Minute to Win It challenge.
The Minute to Win It challenges is made up of several Minute to Win It challenges with fourth graders from Montgomery and Hillsborough, as well as senior citizens from Montgomery and Hillsborough.
Believe it or not, the senior citizens take this challenge very seriously, and there's even a trophy at the end for the winning team. It's a longstanding rivalry.
Wow, very good.
We were able to participate in this amazing activity due to the generosity of the home... Hillsborough Elementary School Home and School Association, who provided us a grant to pay for the bus ride. We spent a few hours at the Montgomery Senior Center doing challenges, talking with the seniors, cheering each other on, and eating our lunch.
We know that the seniors appreciated our participation, and we are very excited that we were there. Many of the seniors told us how much they love kids and being around them. It was a very rewarding experience.
Our computer teacher was able to make a short video to show what we did and how much fun we had. When it is over, we would like to have a few volunteers from the Board of Education try out some of the challenges that we participated in to be ready. Here's the video.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead.
We would like to try two different challenges with the board members. Can we have two volunteers for the first challenge? This is called Hanky Panky.
And you can only use one hand. One hand behind your back.
Come on, Mrs. Haley. Let's go, Rose. Oh, this is like the tortoise and the hare, I think. I think she... I think she wore out her wrist. She got it. See, she went too fast. Wear herself out. You have to pace yourself. Went
Can we have two more volunteers to try another challenge? This is called the Roly-Poly.
Who's going to volunteer? Come on over here.
Two more volunteers.
Last in, first out. Last in, first out. That's Brett. And who else is going to go?
I go for Mrs. Santafonte.
No? Let's go, Mrs. Santafonte. Yeah, there you go. I'm a Plinko guy myself, so... Plinko, yeah. Okay, Mrs. Cropley, you'll have to tell me when to start. We have a minute on the clock. It's a minute on the clock. It's another toilet paper. Is this some of that good one fly that we get from the staff? Is this the Pritchard one fly? Go, Brett. Come on, Brett, let's go. Go. Come on, Brett, go. What are you starting? Worn out? Keep going. Go.
He went darn.
He just about got it. He just about got it. That was awesome. Very nice. Let's give a big hand to our fourth graders from HES. Thank you so much.
I have to say that whether working with a neighboring school system, working with our seniors, or actually being young engineers, the students of this school district are truly doing extraordinary work. Let's give them all a big round of applause.
Oop, and I think we have more? Do we have more? Please, please, please continue.
We hope you enjoyed the challenges as much as we did. Thanks for allowing us to have these great out-of-school experiences and allowing us to explore generosity, sportsmanship, compassion for our elderly community, as well as our fourth graders in our neighboring community of Montgomery.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the board for a brief recess so that we can meet and congratulate our students for doing such a phenomenal job this evening. Five-minute break, please. We're in recess for five minutes. Thank you. All right, thank you. We're coming back from a brief recess. You may have noticed an additional person sitting with us tonight who will be here at all of our meetings, hopefully, as many as she can make. This is... I'd like to introduce you to Jillian Boos. Jillian's an 11th grader at Hillsborough High School, and she'll be serving as the Hillsborough High School representative to the Board of Education. So, I want to welcome Jillian. Let's have applause for Jillian. So, we expect some great input from Jillian for the rest of the school year, at least. Dr. Schiff, we'll continue with superintendent report.
Thank you. Before I give over the mic and we start the regular meeting with the agenda items, we do have some visitors here tonight. On February 3rd, we held a K-9 drug sweep at Hillsborough High School. And we have some visitors who will be available for questions and share a little bit about the activity and our commitment to keeping drugs out of the high school to make that unequivocal is what our position is as a school board in keeping our kids healthy and safe. Tonight, we have Chief Darren Powell from the Hillsborough Police Department. Joining him is Lieutenant Mark Besser, Detective Sergeant Sean Carolyn, and from the prosecutor's office, Assistant Prosecutor Brian Stack. So, I invite Chief Darren Powell to the podium at this time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darren Powell. I'm the chief of police of Hillsborough Township Police Department. And the reason I'm here, like Dr. Schiff said, is on February 3rd, at the beginning of the school day, we held a K-9 drug sweep of the high school. The sweep included the assistance of many agencies, the state police, Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, Sheriff's Department as well as out of county and out of jurisdiction police departments to assist with that. We had approximately 13 K-9 teams sweeping the high school. And what this K-9 sweep consisted of was the K-9 units coming through the school, doing sniffs of the lockers throughout the school, as well as selected classrooms, and also the vehicles of the students in the parking lots. There was a lot of information on social media about numbers of arrests that were made and stuff that was found and stuff that wasn't found. And one of my purposes here is to clear the air exactly what happened there. During the K-9 sweep, we had two positive indications, which means that the dogs indicated on two areas within the school. One was a locker and one was a vehicle. Once the dogs indicated on these areas, these areas were secured, search warrants were obtained, and these areas were searched. And as a result of the activity, no drugs were found. So, as a result of this particular sweep, drug sweep, no drugs were found and no arrests were made, which is not exactly what was kind of going around throughout the community. Doing these drug sweeps isn't exactly new, but it's not something that we do on a very frequent basis. Since I've been a police officer here in Hillsborough, this is the third one we did. We did one in the mid-'90s. We did one in, I believe, it was 2006. And then, we did this one here. As a result of those three drugs sweeps, there was not a whole lot of drugs located or people arrested. In fact, we only have one documented incident of one arrest during all these sweeps. These activities are primary deterrent... for a deterrent to keep kids from bringing drugs from school. That's the primary reason for these sweeps. And at this point, I would be happy to entertain any questions anybody may have about this operation that we conducted back on February 3rd.
It may actually be helpful that if there's any questions, that we just line up right by the podium here so that we can get you on camera, make sure that it's available for the record. And if you do have any questions, we just ask... And if you do have any questions, we just ask that you identify yourself. There may actually be questions from the board also.
I have a question.
Let's go to the, let's go to the public first, because they see someone coming, and then we'll make sure there's a chance for the board also.
Good evening.
I'm Hillary Scannelli. I guess I just had a quick question, wondering how did you decide which specific classrooms to look in? And did you have a heads-up from somebody that there was something going on?
The decision to select a particular classroom is done completely randomly. It was basically done similarly, similarly to a lottery, where we had numbers in a hat and we picked out numbers to designate the classrooms that were selected to be searched. When you do these, what are called suspicionless drug sweeps, it has to be done in a very random manner, and the randomness is, is done almost like a lottery, a lottery basis, and we did, we actually did a sweep through nine classrooms.
Hi, I'm Leslie. I'm wondering why the sweeps are only done every few years? Why aren't they done more often on a regular basis, several times throughout the year?
Thank you. That's a very good question. Coordinating and getting the resources available to do these sweeps, so it has a minimal impact on the learning environment is very difficult. It's not easy to, to gather up the resources that we had to conduct this operation. We had probably in excess of 50 law enforcement personnel from various agencies to assist us with this. I agree that once every 10 years probably isn't enough to do this kind of, this kind of operation, and it's something I'm hoping that we can do more often going forward. And I would just like to add to that, the decision to, the decision to, to hold these operations is not strictly that of the police department. It's a collaborative decision made by the police department, the Board of Education. It requires approval from the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office as well.
Todd Fennato, how come none of the children are checked randomly at all?
The question was how come the, the children are not individually checked by the dogs? Are randomly, individually, whatever the case may be? And the answer to that question is, is there are very strict guidelines that we have to follow, that we have to comply with, and it's based on the, the school search policy that is a statewide policy, and it expressly prohibits the dogs having any direct contact with any children within the school. Yes.
Aunt Fennato, so my question is, we know there are drugs in the school. We have kids in the school, we know what's going on. It seems hard to believe that nothing was found. If the drug sweeps are not effective, is there some other way that we can get in there? Because it's unfair to the kids that aren't doing drugs, and they're being exposed to it, they're being, you know, pressured by other kids to do so, so I feel like something else needs to be done if the drug sweeps are not effective. Is there something we can do?
That is a very tough question to answer, unfortunately. I understand what your concern is, and all I could say is that when the police department gets actionable intelligence on drug activity in the school, we follow up on it and we do a thorough investigation, as thorough of an investigation as we can. I'm quite confident in saying that the Board of Education has a very, very strong interest in keeping drugs out of the school, as does the police department. I, I wish I had a better answer for you as to what can be done to discourage it, but all I could say is that it's something that's a collaborative effort between the Board of Education, the police department, and just as importantly, parents and the students that are in the school. It's, it's something that, that requires more than just a single-tiered approach. It's a social issue throughout, throughout, not, not just the state and the community, but the country, and it's, it's, it's a battle that I'm sure that's, it's gonna go on for some time, and I wish I had a clearer answer of what's the best way to handle it, but unfortunately, I do not.
Brian Stack from the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office. And just to clarify one thing, when we say the, the drug sweep is not an effective tool, the primary purpose of the drug sweep is as a deterrent, so I think it is effective as a deterrent. If we measure success in number of arrests, I don't think necessarily that's the way to, to measure the success of, of the dog sweep. Primary purpose is to deter children from bringing drugs to school. This is one of the tools that we use to do that, so in, in that measure, I think it is successful in that way. In terms of making arrests, there are other ways to do that and other efforts that we make to do that.
Hi, I'm Jean Stats. I was wondering what drugs were the dogs, are the dogs able to detect, specifically?
Unfortunately, I don't have experience as a canine handler. However, I will say that certain prescription drugs, the dogs are not trained to detect certain prescription drugs. Most of the drugs that the dogs are, are trained to detect are illicit, illegal narcotics, and perhaps some of my colleagues here might be able to better answer that question than, than myself.
The canines all in New Jersey all receive the same training. They are trained to sniff for, I believe, seven illicit narcotics, most of the common drugs, marijuana, cocaine, heroin, and so forth.
Ms. Quamazafaro, besides the drug sweep, what is done on a daily basis at the high school to try, deter things also, Ms. Binger?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Binger, the principal of the high school. At the high school, throughout the course of the year, we run an assortment of assemblies for different grade levels that talk about the dangers of drug and alcohol abuse. Our health classes also have an embedded part of each of their curricula that also target this issue. We have two student assistance counselors at the high school who meet with students who are dealing with ongoing drug addiction issues, either their own, in some cases, it's addiction issues within their families. And we have a really good connection with a lot of outside agencies as well, so we're always able to make recommendations to students to, and their families, to go out for additional drug and alcohol counseling as necessary. And then situation-specific, we then reach out for any additional resources that may be necessary, and we try to cover as many bases as we possibly can to keep our kids healthy and, and drug and alcohol-free. Thank you.
We're also very fortunate that we have a very active township municipal alliance that also addresses some of these issues. Dr. Antounas actually represents the school board on it. Maybe you can talk a little bit about the municipal alliance and their, and their work.
Also in response to that question, we do have a full-time police officer stationed at the high school. He's the school resource officer, Russ Wild, and he interacts with the children, the students, and also collects intelligence to help us with investigations.
Ms. Binger, if you could just repeat the question.
Sure. Mr. Moutzafaro's question was, are there people monitoring bathrooms, the commons, things like that? The answer to that is yes. We have teachers who are assigned to all of our lavatories during, around the perimeter of the building throughout the course of the day, students sign in and out. There is a little more flexibility on the lavatories during lunchtime, but there is a teacher positioned, just, truthfully, just due to the volume of the students who need the facilities during that very short 24-minute lunch period, but there are teachers who are assigned right by those doors and monitor what's going on in there, in and out as well. So there are people all over the place, and we have student, teachers rather, who are assigned to assorted duty locations within the commons during lunch period, all the way around the perimeter and halfway through, just to try to keep the peace. Our kids are fantastic, fortunately, and largely, they just want to come and sit down and relax for 24 whole minutes and do a little bit of homework and catch up with some friends, but, you know, I, the, the police department was teasing me when I talk about every high school being a microcosm of society. Everyone who finally winds up out into society goes through high school at one point or another, and those are the kids who are really focused in doing everything they can to do everything right, and then kids who are making some choices that hopefully aren't life-changing choices for them. We take every opportunity that we can to make a difference in their lives and try to intercede at a point before those changes are devastating and, as I said, life-changing. I'm actually really appreciative to the police department, to Chief Powell and Lieutenant Besser, and the Prosecutor's Office, certainly, and the, all of the Hillsborough Township Police and the assorted agencies who came out to help us with this drug sweep. It's, it is quite a feat to organize, and there's a lot that goes into it, but the point of it is very clearly to be a deterrent, to make the message so clear to our students that drugs are not welcome here. And we, we take that all very, very seriously, and I think this was a rather surprising message to the students that something like this can happen at any time, and yes, it's a lot of work to put together, but that doesn't mean that it can't happen more than once in a year, it doesn't mean that it can't happen two times, three times in a year. It's that what-if possibility that is meant to remind students that, first off, make better choices and lead healthy, drug-free lifestyles, but second, if you are dealing with an addiction, the last place your drugs belong is in our high school, because we're here to learn and we're here to keep this place safe for everybody involved. So it was a really good joint, um, community effort, and I, I hope that we see a real difference in the attitudes of some students who may have been a little lackadaisical or a little daring with things that they may have considered doing in the past and will reconsider those choices in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can swing to the board, is there any questions from the Board of Education? Ms. Haley?
First of all, I just want to thank the Prosecutor's Office and the police department, because this is year six for me on the Board of Education, and as the superintendent knows, I've been pushing this, for this for a long time, and it's the first one, so to me, it's almost a little bit of a joke that it took how long to do this again, and we also have a random drug testing policy. The kids know that we're not doing it, so really, what are we doing to deter things? We know there's a problem, maybe we got lucky and we didn't find things, but what, what are we doing? I'm sorry. And again, it's no knock against the police department. I, I was married to a police officer that did this stuff, I know how much it takes, but how can I say that I can be an effective board member or that we're actually doing something proactive when I've been sitting here for six years and we've had this conversation many times?
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Truha?
So it sounds like the, the expectation was that you might find something in the sweep? Was the expectation of the police department and the Somerset, Somerset County Prosecutor's Office that you would find drugs in the high school?
I did actually expect that we would find something, and I was a little bit surprised that we did not.
Okay. So my other question is, within Somerset County, have other schools had drug sweeps?
Yes, there have been other schools, I think Ridge did it, or a few years ago. Not that common. It is somewhat of a large undertaking, you know, to secure canines from around the state to do this. Not everyone has a canine, and if they have a canine, not everyone is prepared to share it, get, send it to, we had canines from the federal government, we had canines from Bergen County, from all over, to get the dogs here to do this. So have other schools done it? Yes. Generally, do we find things? I'd say more often than not, we do not, because generally, it's a random search. You're not searching every child. In fact, you're not searching any children. You're not searching every classroom, you're selecting some at random. In general, you hit the lockers and the cars, that's what we've done in the past. So it's not that uncommon to not find anything from a random sweep like this.
Can you estimate how many drug sweeps there have been in the last, I want to say, 30 years? Like, I'm just, from the '90s through now? Within Somerset County, if there's three in Hillsborough, within the county, could you just estimate? Is it 10 or?
I don't think it's been more than 10. I know Hillsborough's done it, I know we've done it up in Basking Ridge. Fortunately, I haven't been around about 30 years, so I can't speak for before I was at Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, but from recent memory, those are the two schools I, I can recall doing it.
So just Basking Ridge and Hillsborough?
I believe it was Basking Ridge, I knew it was somewhere up in the hills. We did one about 2014. I don't recall Somerville doing one, but less than 10, I would estimate, in the last 15 years.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Oss.
Hi, Chief. Can I just ask the question, given all your years in law enforcement, what would you consider a successful deterrent program? Are there programs that other districts are doing that are more or less effective than what Hillsborough High School's doing?
I'm not aware of anything out there that's any more or less effective, to tell you the truth. For a while, there was the dare program out there. That's something to consider, I guess. We haven't done it in, in quite a number of years, but as, as far as there being an alternative to deter it through the schools, I, I think the best thing is, is education, education of the children. As far as a, a law enforcement deterrent through the school, I, I don't think that's as effective as education for the kids. And Principal Binger touched upon something very interesting about, talking about keeping drugs out of the schools and, and thinking of, thinking of mechanisms to keep them completely out of the schools. Well, you could completely keep everything out of the schools, but it's not gonna change what they do when they leave school grounds, and they're off on the weekends doing their own thing, or whether they're, they're, they're home, or at the park, or just hanging with their friends. Just as importantly as keeping it off of the school grounds, is keeping it out of the hands of the children of that age demographic, and all, and all people for that matter.
Ms. Centefonte?
I was gonna say, along those lines, in terms of education, we had mentioned the municipal alliance a couple minutes ago, that is a really active committee which Jean will be part of this year. I think the town doesn't take advantage of all the programs we do try and do in terms of education about heroin, I know they've put on, probably, they try and put on a couple of programs a year. We have a county alliance, so there's a coalition alliance of children starting in, I believe, seventh, no, sixth grade or seventh grade, all the way up through high school, that works with, I think, Hunterdon County as well, Somerset County, trying to educate them to be good role models, to go out to their communities, their schools, and promote a drug-free, alcohol-free life. I know the, in middle school, I think the, the police have come in and done talks for parents about, you know, what are the drugs out there, what is going on? The kids put on programs for their parents and the community, so I think we're trying, maybe it's not enough, but I do think we have a lot of programs that, for the size of our district, we don't utilize either. So I don't know how to get the word out other than that. I mean, I, I do think the county as a whole, I mean, even the governor at this point is trying to give people with addiction a second shot. So I, I think people realize we have a problem as a, as a whole, as a society, and I do think we have some mechanisms in our community, our own community, to try and help our students and our families, and hopefully, maybe after this, more people will start participating in some of those programs that we do jointly through the alliance.
So actually, the alliance meets this Friday at 9 o'clock in the Hillsborough Municipal Building, and it's, it's open to the public.
And just in terms, in terms of a deterrent from the Prosecutor's Office perspective, obviously, there's a multi-tiered approach. Prosecutor Robertson has made a challenge of the battling the opioid epidemic his number-one priority here. In terms of prosecutions, we have obviously an organized crime narcotics task force that focuses on drug crimes. We have at Somerset County Prosecutor's Office at least three cases out of Hillsborough that I can remember in the last five years involving strict liability for drug-induced death. I prosecuted one in 2011. We had a prosecution and a conviction last year with, involving a Hillsborough victim. That, that statute provides that if you distribute CDS, including heroin, to someone who
who later ingests that CDS and dies, you're strictly liable for that death. It's 10 to 20 years in state prison. So, I know we've had three cases involving Hillsborough in the last five years. Our office has had more than that. So, we're trying to prosecute dealers who are distributing when their distributions result in deaths. We're arresting people who are involved in the distribution of CDS generally. In addition, we have the Drug Court Program in Somerset County, which is a new program, not new, it's probably five to 10 years old, where people who have, who are addicted to drugs and they keep repeating crimes that are involved in addiction of drugs, shoplifting, possession, things like that, it's a much more intense supervision. You don't go straight to jail. You go to weekly meetings. If you slip up, you generally get a weekend in jail. So, it's sort of a, a much more intense approach that has been expanded, the Drug Court Program. Finally, I know that the county offers the START Program for families that are dealing with addiction. The START Program will give you education, will give you resources in terms of counselors to see. They'll give you Narcan training if you're dealing with an opioid problem in your family. And I believe you also get access to naloxone, or the, the antidote basically for heroin. So, that's called the START Program that you can get through Somerset County.
Mr. Cohen?
I think he just, thank you. I think you just answered my question or my comment. First, I wanted to say thank you to all the public safety professionals that took time to do this. I, I, I realize it wasn't going to amount to a, an arrest, you know, as a deterrent, so I wasn't surprised. But, I'm kind of sort of to this point where I'm not worried so much about the turn. I think the police department and the county is doing as good a job as they can. What I learned that I didn't know, and what I've learned that I now know, that there's no avenue, well, I didn't think there was any avenue for parents to turn to, any professional guidance. This is the first I'm hearing of it. We need to put that in on our website, direct parents to be able to get to that information. Showing, does anybody know that program existed?
Which one?
What?
The one that the prosecutor just mentioned.
The START Program.
Yeah. Did anybody here in the room understand what he just said? This is a resource for anybody who wants to find out about drugs, that they can get any information, anyone as a parent.
Thank you.
And I didn't know it existed, and I think we're going to probably work with, the administration's going to be urged to work and put some kind of link in our website so these parents can get to it and find out more information.
It's called the Somerset County, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I'm just going to say, we need to help the parents, as much as we sit and counsel the kids. I think we need to have a pointed stick, where somebody at the end of that stick is the, a place that the parents can go to and seek help and guidance, because they're lost.
The Somerset County START Program stands for Steps to Action Recovery and Treatment. Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, Prosecutor's Office, State Coalition, County Chiefs of Police put together this program. You go to the Somerset County website.
And they can come to you in confidence and not worry about their children or, you know, being arrested, or?
Will you start with the START Program for information about resources like that? If you're calling my office directly, I can provide information on that. If you're calling to give information about criminal activity that you were of, you know, someone, that's a little different.
I wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate Mr. Cohen's comments on this. Some of these issues are in part school issues, some are in part law enforcement issues, some are mental health, public health issues, some are issues in, in working with families to provide them with particular services. Our students' assistant counselors are, are wonderful, wonderful resources that help to provide families with additional support and resources. There's a lot that is available, and we'd be more than happy to make those programs at the county level, at the state level, at the local level, very transparent for parents. Those families who have a child who is dealing with addiction are probably within our system, and they, and they know and have those resources provided for them, and, and are well aware of the connections that they can make. But we can never do enough of that, to help families connect with people that can, that can be helpful.
Thanks. Ms. Trujillo?
So, I just wanted to share the burrowaware.org website, which is actually the alliances, municipal alliances website, that actually has a link to the START Steps to Action Recovery Treatments. It's actually online, which I think it's just a link to probably the Somerset County Prosecutor. So, it is available through the township, actually. So, it's just for the audience. It's www.burrowaware.org.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I just, first of all, I want to thank Hillsborough Township Police Chief.
Excuse me?
Oh. You're more, okay, you can go ahead, Emmy, go ahead.
Thanks. My name's Mike Riley. A parent, but also I own Hillsborough Funeral Home here in town. And actually, every year, annually, of course, getting pretty tired of conducting funerals due to drug overdose. In 2015, there were 1,600 drug overdoses in New Jersey. 2000, so that's 15. 2016, that's going up, and it's the opiate, opiate, heroin epidemic. That's four times greater than the murder rate and three times greater than automobile deaths. So, it's, it's here to stay. I think it's great what the chief and the prosecutor's office did. I think it's great that the school has these classes, but I think it's time we take our head out of the sand as parents and we start owning it. I think we have to start opening up and, and parenting our kids. It happens under our own roof at home. It's great, all these other things that are provided by the school system, but if, you know, if the parents aren't pushing or don't know about it, and the parents aren't talking to their kids and paying attention to them, then we're not doing anything about it. It's great to have a website. It's great to have a link. It's great to have a class. But as parents, we really have to wake up and know what's going on. So, another resource, I stopped at CVS on the way here. I bought a $50 drug test. I'm willing to donate the first 100 anonymously to anybody in town who doesn't want to be a friend to their children right now, wants to be a parent, wants to challenge them to show me that you're drug-free. Let's have that relationship. Stop, stop waiting till it's too long and you have to call me for help, when you could have done something like this and called Carrier for help, or somewhere else for help. So, I'm putting it out there. I have no problem with it. You know, if it's 200, 300, I'm here to help. I'm getting tired of this. We need to wake up, because it's real, it's in our neighborhoods, it's in Hillsborough. I, I'm sure the chief will agree with me. The drug sweep came up nothing, but that doesn't mean we're drug-free. They're out here, they're, they're, they're under a lot of roofs that, that the parents don't realize. So, I'm just asking everybody to, let's wake up as a community, let's help each other. And I'll start with, call the funeral home anonymously. I'll leave it in the mailbox, I'll leave it on the side of the building. If you, if you suspect, do something about it. Save your kids' lives, please, so that I don't have to take care of it.
Do we have anyone else from the public?
My name's Jimmy Burke. This subject is at close to home for myself and a lot of families that have come here. And my issue is, I think the police are doing a good job, but like Mike said, it's a family thing, and I know personally, I've dropped the ball. And, but I'm learning as I go, and a lot of other families are too. My biggest issue is, we know who these kids are in the school, and we don't get them out of the school. So, you know, one of the moms just got a text that the kids that deal drugs in school now are celebrities because the cops did a drug sweep and they didn't get anybody. So, we know, we know who the kids are that are dealing the drugs, and we need to do more, you know, as, as a school, to get these kids out of the school. You know, kids, parents don't want, are taking their kids and taking them out of the high school and sending them to private school. Why do we have to get our kids out of Hillsborough? We should be getting the kids that are dealing the drugs out of the school. So, I think, you know, we do a lot, you guys do a lot. I, I've, I've learned that over the course of the months, but we, we all, and myself included, you know, I coached football, I started dressing my team last year, and we need to do more of that as our organization. But we all could do a little more, a little more, because there is a problem in our town. I grew up here, I've been here my whole life, and there's a problem. And people and parents, they say there isn't, they're lying. And we need to, we need to do more. So, and the stuff you're doing, I, I, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And by the way, just because you dropped the ball now, doesn't mean you can't pick it up from here and continue running with it. There's many families that are in the same situation, and that's so important, and I appreciate your candor. The other thing that I would suggest, and this goes for anyone that's in the room or outside that is listening to this, if you know of any criminal activity that is going on, please report it to the Hillsborough Township Police Department or report it to us. We have a memorandum of understanding that all public schools in the state of New Jersey sign off with our chiefs of police throughout every single district, in every single police department in this entire state, where we share that information to ensure that our kids are safe and that we keep drugs out of our, out of our schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, Jamie Moore. Been a township resident a long time, and been active in a lot of the community groups in Hillsborough and youth sports programs. We all live very busy lives, and that's, it's, it's tough for parents to stay not only on top of their kids' schedules, but their own schedules. However, last year, I happened to have, myself and my wife happened to have a night that was free, and the speaker that was hired by, I believe, the Board of Education from Steered Straight, Michael DeLeon, and also, I believe, the township hired him and had him speak. And my son came home and told me about it, and me and my wife went to the meeting that night at the municipal building. And it was eye-opening. It was educational. It, it, it just brought to the forefront, you know, some of the history of how opiates have been pushed into our society through law, as well as what's going on in the community, you know, how the kids are using it, where it's coming from, what are the signs, what are the things for a parent that you could pick up on. Unfortunately, there was probably only about 20 to 30 people at this meeting, parents. And I just think if we found a way, we're in the education business, or you're in the education business, to educate, and not only the students, but maybe more importantly, the parents, as Mr. Riley said. And find ways through, I know a, a big gathering every year at the high school, and it's really probably the key years, seventh grade through senior year, find ways maybe at back-to-school night, or other nights where the parents are there to give them 20 minutes of something that's high-impact. I know Mike, on his website, has tremendous videos that he's put together that, I mean, bring tears to your eyes when you, you watch them, okay? And you see how these people's lives have just, of all ages, but especially the young ones, are just addicts now, and they'll fight that for the rest of their lives, or unfortunately, maybe end up at a funeral home. But maybe look at ways within the township as well, and possibly in the, in the school system, where when those parents are gathered, or maybe push things, you know, I know there's a lot of programs we offer that we have to go find it, or a parent has to go find it, you know, and for whatever reason, not enough of them are. And maybe if there's ways where we can come together and bring things, and force them to sit down in the gymnasium on back-to-school night for 15 minutes during their health class period, and hit them with a high-impact video or some real hard education on, on, on this issue. Just, you know, and if it saves one, it's worth it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anything else from the board?
Just to follow up on everything, we talk about a lot of education. The other thing that has come out in the last couple of years in the county are safe drop boxes for medications. We do have them in Hillsborough, so if you have medications just lying around, that should have no one's hands on them, no children, no one should have access to them. We do have drop boxes within the county that you can just go and deposit them, so that they do not go down the toilets, in the garbage, or get into the wrong cans. So, it is one other thing that people should just routinely do, is go through the medicine cabinets, take out the stuff, and appropriately dispose of it.
And we do have one of those drop boxes in the lobby of Police Headquarters.
Thank you, Mrs. Scannelli.
Sorry, Hillary Scannelli, again. I just have another quick question. This is probably more for the board than for the police. But I know that my son plays sports, and they had, we had a sign of paper saying that they could random drug test. How often do they do it? I mean, do, do we not do it all? Is there a budget reason why we don't do it? Is it just that maybe it's not on the forefronts of our mind to do it? Maybe if we did it more often, the kids might be a little bit more scared to even be using? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there and asking.
Can I say? Please. Well, thank you for the question, first of all. We've been doing a random drug testing since 2008. After the first four years study of the program, we had an assessment, a study done, and Dr. Antunes was involved with that. She put together a, a great report that showed it wasn't working effectively as a deterrent. Nevertheless, we, we decided to continue it, and we've continued now for another five years. And we're going to continue with it. We have no plans to drop it at this point, you know, certainly for this school year, probably not for the next either, at least. And we don't like to, and we shouldn't, although we could discuss this at committee, if we have a change of policy, but it's been our practice not to divulge how many tests we do. No matter what number we say, it's going to sound to teenagers like, oh, that's not very much. We could say we do 1,000 a year, and they'd say, well, there's 20, you know, 2,300 kids in the high school, my chances are less than one in, you know, less than 50%. Teenagers don't assess risk. It's no, it's no mystery why, why it's tough to find an effective deterrent program for high school students, because teenagers don't assess risk the way adults assess risk. They just don't assess. That's why it, it's difficult to find an effective one. I, I very much appreciate the, the canine sweep that we had. If it, if it connects to deterrent, I think that's great. And we, we, we have that, we have our other deterrent programs, but it's, it's difficult. It's difficult to, to get, to get one that's effective. One thing I did want to mention, Mr. Cohen, I'll get to you in just a second, that something that we haven't mentioned so far is that all our staff are, are required, and if you correct, correct me if I'm wrong, are required to report if a student is under the influence, if they, if they, if they suspect the student's under the influence of a, of a substance, they are required to report that. They are, they have some training in that? Their staff have some?
Well, they, they report it to the, to the school nurse typically, and then there's an evaluation. They go through mandatory testing.
And so, our, our staff is looking for that on a daily basis also. Thank you. Mr. Cohen, you have something?
I have a few somethings. Number one, as a taxpayer and as a member of the board, I'd like to know, does public safety, police agree with this, that there's a deterrent factor in, in advertising the number of tests and results, and students that are just, are, that are tossed off their teams are, is that something we're not supposed to tell the public? Number one, don't answer that question yet, please don't. Number two, who decided that? Number three, I think as a member of the board and as a taxpayer, but primarily as a member of the board, I asked for that number, I want to know that number. I have a right to know that number. And I think as a taxpayer, the public deserves that right. And I don't see how, knowing how many tests or how many no tests were taken, is going to make a difference. We have a problem. And putting our head in the sand and saying, oh, we can't tell you how many tests it's going to take, you know, how many tests should take, or how many tests we didn't take, or it's going to make a difference. The fact is, we're not testing anybody, that I can tell, all right? Because nobody's told me any exact numbers. Now, I need to know from the chief if he feels differently, one way or another, and will he disagree on this or not.
Well, I have to be honest with you. What you're asking, I really don't have any firsthand knowledge of what laws may be involved in the disclosure of that information from the Board of Education's perspective. Certainly, statistical data as to the number of people arrested, charged, searched, checked, could have a deterrent effect, but I don't know, I don't underst, I don't know any, what, what, what restrictions the Board of Education is under to release that type of information.
So, there is nothing from your department that says you shouldn't put that information out?
From the police department's perspective, no. I am not aware of anything.
No police department directive telling the board, you can't advise the public or the board, how many tests are given on a yearly basis, and what the results of those tests?
There are no, there's no laws that I'm aware of that restrict that information. I think that would be strictly a determination. I think that would be strictly a determination to be made by the Board of Education.
We're not under his jurisdiction. What his opinion is, is not the jurisdiction of the board. They're two different things.
Share your opinion, Brett.
I just shared my opinion.
No, share your opinion. Why is it so funny? Why are you smiling?
No, you're asking a question, he said he can't answer because he has.
You're sitting there shaking your head like this, and making smirks.
Let's, okay, let's, you know what? Let's direct our comments to the chair, or to the administration.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm sorry about that.
I have no comment.
That's all right, that's all right. I apologize to the member, but this is a very difficult situation.
There also needs to be clarity as to what our actual random drug testing policy is.
Yes.
And it's with regard to...
Okay, let's get some clarity, let's get some numbers, let's set some parameters, and some rules, and let's advise the board what's going on.
And, and as stated in our policy, it's directed towards deterrence and remediation rather than punishment of pupils who test positive for alcohol, non-prescribed medications, legal drugs, or their metabolites. Consequences for a pupil who tests positive for legal drugs or other metabolites will be followed according to board regulation. It's not intended to be disciplinary or punitive in nature, as is, as indicated by existing court decisions as it relates to loss of instructional time. No pupil shall be expelled or suspended from school as a sole result of any verified test consulted by the school under the random drug testing program. We've had this discussion.
It's been the last two years. I haven't heard that. That's the first I've heard of it.
Correct.
Yeah, well, I'm, I know that when I've been on the board, when we had the report, we talked, we had that discussion, and because of constitutional amendments.
Tom, we haven't had this discussion. This is the first time you and I have heard this, out loud in public.
And I also, I also would like the board to refer to, as, as we get in each of the monthly, you know, the confidential student suspension analyses that we get, take a look at that, because there are items with regard to possession of marijuana, drug paraphernalia, possession, distribution, sale. So, that, that'll give you some information as well, that there are intersections that occur.
Ms. Haley?
So, you know, again, I mentioned it earlier, but if I, at least, one of the reasons I was given at one time by administration was that the, we don't, we don't have the staffing capacity to keep up with doing the drug testing on a consistent basis. Now, we spend money on a lot of other stuff. I can't imagine that if twice a month, we had a consultant, or some kind of outsourcing service come in and do the random drug testing so that we don't have to take it away from the nursing supervisor, why isn't that something that we've ever looked into either? We spend money on a lot of other stuff that we probably don't have to.
Well, you know, I have to say, and, you know, I have to say that this is a continuing conversation that we, we need to have. And, you know, I know that our motivation is to try to make sure that our kids are healthy, and we keep drugs out of the high school. And, you know, although, although there is...
Hillsborough written on the wall of the high school last year. Come on.
And, and believe me, this is nothing that anybody is comfortable with, Jen. What's very important, and I know that, that this can get people very angry and very upset, we need to focus that energy into developing policies and procedures that minimize the risks to our kids, knowing full well that we have a very large, comprehensive high school, that is reflective of a diverse community. But what I heard tonight was a lot of families that are willing to step up and step out to say the right thing, to do the right thing. You have a committed administration to also do the right thing, and I know that the board wants to do the right thing. Now, that doesn't mean that we're all going to agree on what that right thing is, but the more that we have conversation about it, the more that we're moving the agenda forward. And I can guarantee you, we have a lot of people at the high school right now who care deeply about this issue, and who spend their professional time just working with students that are struggling and working through some of these issues, and their families as well. And I don't want in any way the, the, the upset or the concern that has been expressed here tonight about it, to reflect in any negative way on the very good work that's already going on within this district. But we need to move forward with, with, I think with an attitude, and a, and a focus on moving the agenda forward in this area.
Can you, I didn't hear the rest of the answer to those questions. Could we provide how a side of the company can ask?
The answer is, the answer is, of course we could, but the question is, is that the right way to do it? We have a nine-member elected board that is representative of the community. People have different opinions about how to do these type of things. My point is that we shouldn't stop the conversation, that we should continue this dialogue after this meeting closes, because we still have concern that's out there. We still have, and we know this, that there are kids that are using drugs, and we need to engage them and their families, we need to coordinate a community effort in order to do that, and build upon the good work that's already going on. And I think that's my message. Mr. President?
Thank you.
Keep coming to Facebook, keep coming to the meetings, hear the word.
Let's go to, Thomas, let's close it out first, Thomas.
All right, well, Tom Isabella, nine up in the Shantek Court, I'll make it very quick. I wasn't intending to speak, as I've said many times before, I usually don't, but something made me jump out of my seat. I'm a graduate from 2012, and when you said, President Gillette, that the, the random drug policy wasn't proven to be effective, but yet we're still using it, I was like, why would we do, why would we do that? That doesn't make much sense.
We voted six to three to continue it in 2012.
Fair enough, but it doesn't, if we put together a whole policy, or put, Dr. Antunes put together the whole thing, and we've come, we concluded that it wasn't effective, you know, I now work for the state, okay? So, I mean, I, I, I try to do things in an effective, efficient manner, and I've come across things where I've done things differently because what was done before wasn't working. So I inputted new ways to do my job, to make sure I did it more effectively for the clients that I help serve. So shouldn't we be doing the same for the children of Hillsborough by maybe having a more targeted search? I don't know if, you know, you know, if that would be, you know, you know, hampering the constitutional, and then the constitutional rights of individuals, but is there a more way we could, more targeted focus on the, those that others have mentioned tonight, who we know are the, you know, the drug, you know, users, or individuals who we might suspect are using or dealing, that kind of thing? Is there a way that we could go about it without hampering or taking away constitutional rights, which are very important?
Speak right into the microphone, Thomas. Speak right into the microphone, just like I did.
Yes, so, I was asking the chief if there was a way we could institute a policy that went after the people we know who are the drug users, but more importantly, the drug pushers, and without hampering or taking away their constitutional rights. Because if we're continuing a policy that isn't working, it doesn't make sense, and it's not solving any problems. So I think whether the board said yes, six to three, or not, if it's not working, it's not working, and we need to do something different. So, I'll turn it over to the chief.
What he's asking is, is can we differentiate the way we treat a high school suspect of a crime from someone who's not a school member of the crime? And the answer is no. We have to treat a suspect with the same constitutional concerns and investigative, investigative safeguards, or, or what we're bound to do, whether it's a school student, or whether it's somebody outside the schools. So, no, we can't treat a, a school student any differently. We still have the same requisite probable cause, reasonable suspicion, and things of that nature for, to determine how we actually go forward with an investigation. We can't handle it any differently, whether it's a school, or whether it's an investigation that's going on outside the school.
Thank you. Yes, I, I just want to take just one brief moment to thank once again Chief Powell, Lieutenant Besser, Detective Sergeant Carolyn, and Assistant Prosecutor Brian Stack, who came here tonight to help us to understand the process, and to be available to our community. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
I would like to conclude by saying that my door is always open, my phone's always available. If you have anything you need to talk to me about, my detectives who investigate are the, these type offenses that we're dealing with, call them, we're always ready to listen to information. I would conclude by saying I'm quite proud of the proactive approach that we take in investigating drug crimes, and dealing with this type of incident. And shortly before I came here, I got a call from Somerset County Prosecutor Michael Robertson. He would have liked to have been here tonight, but he had a previous engagement. I feel confident in, in conveying and communicating the passion he has for this very subject that we're discussing here tonight. And I, I trust everybody in this room has the same goal of, of trying to address this problem in the most efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Schiff, for the superintendent's report. We're going to move right to approval of minutes. Am I, is my mood? Get your pencil ready. So, we have two sets of minutes. We have the January 30th regular, and the January 30th executive session. So, can I have a motion for a January 30th regular public meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Mrs. Haley? Okay, and for the motion for the January 30th executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Judy and Tom. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stayed.
Brett Cooper? Okay.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. Let's see. All right, we're up to comments from the board public. This is one of two times during the meeting that we'll have opportunity, well, it's actually going to be three times tonight, because we've had one opportunity already. There are a couple of times during board meetings when the public is invited to speak. One time is now, for any item that's on tonight's action agenda, or new business, or tonight actually also input on the 2017-18 budget. There'll be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but are rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president, or, or the superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment, or asks a question about personnel, or hiring set, or hiring sessions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Before you make your comments, state your name, address, group affiliation, as appropriate. Thank you.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. With regards to the budget, you know, as we went through the last conversation, I was struck by the fact that we kept coming back to some of the people being on the front line of this, as the nurses, the guidance counselors, all of those people. Yet in many of our schools, we're sharing one guidance counselor between two buildings, we're sharing, we have our nurses at a, a student-to-nurse ratio that is well below what is recommended. So, we're looking at the problem, we're looking at how can we, how can we solve this problem by catching it, but we're not dealing with, or at least not discussing in public, how to actually deal with what's possibly causing it. We've spent unlimited sums shrinking the world for the students through the use of technology, but we're doing nothing to address the stressors that are, that that's increasing for them. We've made them have constant contact with each other, and then on top of that, increase the stresses that they have through high-stakes testing, through everything else that we roll out on them, yet we've decreased the number of people in the buildings to actually help them with these stresses, and yet then we're left scratching our heads when we're wondering why there's now possibly a substance issue in some of our buildings. So, as you consider the budget, just like I would say to you when we were looking at the conditions of our buildings, and questioning how mold, sewage, all of these other things were occurring within our buildings, it was from neglect. It was because we cut our custodial staff, because we cut our buildings and ground staff. We can't expect that we're going to have different results with our staff members or with our students if we're not taking care of them as well. If we're choosing to focus on the shiny things, and let it, losing focus on them as students, which we do many wonderful things for them. This is not to disparage those people, I am proud to represent those people, but we can't expect them to carry all of this for that many students by themselves. You have a responsibility to make budgetary decisions that are in the best interest of these kids, not just off of education, not just off of technology, but as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kitty Ward, Sunny Mead Elementary School, and HEA secretary. Also considering the budget, I did want to speak to a lot of what Henry is saying, that we're, we're looking at the high school, and just like we need to teach them how to read in first, and second, and third grade, and through the middle school, to prepare them for high school, we also need to address the stressors and the things that are hitting, and it's not just hitting them in high school, it's not just hitting them in middle school. We have behaviors and things that are occurring every day in the elementary school, and like Henry said, you hope that it happens on a day when the guidance counselor is there. And nine times out of 10, Murphy's Law, it does not. And so we are left trying to deal with these stressors, that our children are, are being pressured, families are pressured, so we really, when we're looking from a budgetary standpoint, trying to address the problem, we can't just address it at the high school level. We really need to bring it down lower. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and any, from the new business from the board, that, other than the action agenda, that will?
Which committee, I'm sorry, President, which committee would review the drug testing on the...
Education Committee, because that falls under, most of it falls under Dr. Antunes.
And then which committee would also, and this would be HR to look at, possibly looking at options of hiring, or not hiring, consulting, or somebody who could address parent concerns, as opposed to just student counseling, parent counseling. And the reason why I mention it's only because I know that in the scheme of things, in the story of board educations and, and administration, we don't, we don't think of educating parents on drug issues as, as ours responsibility, but since the majority of our tax dollars goes to the board education, since this is tangentially a student issue, I think if the students are allowed to go to a guidance counselor in confidence, and it's a state law, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that, they have that confidence that they can keep, and not worry about, will not worry about it coming back to their parents, I think the parents should be able to have a resource that we can provide them, to help them, because who else is doing it? Nobody else is doing it. You know, so we should be able to explore it as a, as a, in our policy committee.
The school's our great community resource, for everyone, not just the students. I think that's your overall...
Right, and I, we should go ahead and, and push for this, if you studied and...
Absolutely. Absolutely, sure. Absolutely, and we will, I'm sure. Any, so, I'm sorry, from the, from the public, any other, I don't know if the public has finished any other new business, or anything else from public? Okay, let's go to the, Dr. Schiff, I think we'll go over to the action agenda, is that? Thank you.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve travel-related expenses, field trip destinations, family math and science sessions, as listed, to approve the policy and regulations for second reading, including the policies for Americans with Disability Act, the Title I, education stability for children in foster care, and the policy and regulations for Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, education of homeless children, and student records.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
There was also overnight trips, I'm sorry, I didn't read it publicly, but it's on your agenda, 8.4.
I saw that. Yep. Any discussion? No? No discussion? All right, let's go for a roll call, Mr. Ramon.
Vicente Avante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making in the area of human resources, to approve the resolution to create a part-time instructional assistant position at Woods Road Elementary School, to approve the retirement of Karen Hoffman, she's a grade six literacy teacher at On Road to Intermediate School, and has been with us since 1984, and we really appreciate her dedication and commitment to our students for that length of time. Also to approve the revised leaves of absence, and the revised long-term substitutes, contract changes as listed, revised leaves of absence, and appointments of an occupational therapist, instructional assistants, co-curricular advisors, and substitutes. Also to approve the mentors, approve seven periods coverage, and to pre-approve extra coverage, as well as approve the extra coverage from the list, approve group changes.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion?
Sub move.
And a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on HR, Jen? Nope, no discussion, all right. Let's go for a roll call. Again, Mr. Moon.
Vicente Avante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly financials, line item transfers, and accept the donation of a full-size geological map of the United States from Michael Urick.
This is not life-size, huh?
Full-size, right. Also to approve the addendum to the collective negotiated agreement.
Can I have a motion?
Sub move.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Brett?
Got it.
Any discussion? Mr. Kins?
With regard to item 10.4, motion to approve the addendum to the collective negotiations agreement. Just a real quick background for the, for the board and the public. As was communicated by Mr. Goodhue, President of the HEA, during a public comment section at the last board meeting on January 30th, the HEA took exception to the board's interpretation of a negotiated change in the contract regarding Article 8.2.1 in the section regarding the school calendar, as I reported out during the action agenda when we were reviewing the HEA contract to ratify. The HEA's position, as articulated by the President, Mr. Goodhue, is that the scope of that article is specifically and solely for nurses. The board accepts and affirms the HEA's position on their defined scope of Article 8.2.1. To address the issue, an amendment to the HEA contract was agreed to the next day that restores the language from the original contract, which is before the board to act on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Vicente Avante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to old business. Any old business from the public? Is there any other items? Basically, free session, anything you need to talk about?
Sorry, Mike Riley again. I just want to go over the random drug testing. What you stated, it did not work, but you voted anyway, but why can you not give the numbers? Is that in the policy?
No, it's not in the policy, but it's been our practice, but we would have to have a discussion, probably at the committee level.
Okay.
So I guess the Education Committee handles that policy. And if they, if they feel that it's desirable to give that...
Disclose that?
Then I think we'd probably do that.
Okay. Can you also disclose the financials involved with the drug testing to us?
Yeah, I don't know if we have that available now, but that's...
I don't, I don't mean now.
That's something that hasn't been...
I don't mean now, I'll email you.
No, that's something that hasn't been, that we haven't kept.
And my last, my last point, because I'm just a numbers guy sometimes, you said, as far as the Hillsborough High School students, if you gave a thousand tests, that wouldn't change what they're doing?
No, I think, I think studies that I've read for, about adult behavior, and most of these studies about deterrent drug use in adult behavior are done in the military.
I believe you said high school, though.
And those studies say that you have to have, a person has to have, has to feel adult, has to feel like they have a one in two chance of being caught before their behavior is significantly changed.
Okay, I heard, I heard adults, I heard military, but originally I heard, you quoted high schoolers.
Teenagers that assess risk differently.
And that's your opinion?
Yeah. Here's my thought.
You come into high school, you're going to give a thousand drug tests. If I am guilty, or positive, no prom, no sports, no snowball, that, that's very important to high school students. This will deter them, no doubt, if the punishment is something like that. And I'm sure the principal can back me up on that, how important, Spirit Night, there is no doubt in my mind that if you are completely isolated because you are doing drugs or bringing drugs into the high school, I gotta believe the test. Now, if these numbers come back, and there are 25 random tests done out of 2,300, then we're going to realize where this program is and how ridiculous it is.